All right, we will call this meeting to order, the Thursday, December twelfth, or December 12th, 2024 Board of Education meeting. Jeremy, will you please call roll?
Mr. Mitchell.
Here.
Mrs. McMackin.
Here.
Mrs. Mars.
Here.
Mr. Frazier.
Here.
Mr. Ford.
Here. All right. Stand up for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, everyone has the minutes in front of you from our last board meeting. That was on November 14th, 2024. These were sent out to you earlier and they were on board docs, so you've had time to look at them. If there are any questions or amendments, we will address those now. If not, I will take a motion to approve the November board meeting minutes.
Second.
All right. Sorry, I have to wear my glasses. I'm getting old.
Wow.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign? All right. Minutes have been approved. Now, we need a motion for the approval of the agenda tonight. Do we have a motion for that?
So moved.
Steve, then we have a second. A second by Kelly. All right, approval of the agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right. Agenda is approved. Moving right along. We have nothing on the hearing of the public agenda items, so now we're going to jump right into Jeremy's treasurer agenda.
All right, well, good news. We are on track at this moment to finish the year in the black and everything is exactly where it needs to be, or running a little better than what we expected to. So, things are good at the moment as far as the financial situation's concerned. Does anybody have any questions about the reports you received? We're not too far off from the five-year forecast, so I'm not going to talk a lot tonight because nothing really has changed since the last time we spoke about the future of the funding, but we'll see how that goes.
I don't pay attention to that. It's too far in advance.
It's true, but I'll let you know when it's time.
I'm sure you will.
All right, no questions for Jeremy?
No.
All right. Well, then, we need to take a, we're motion for the approval of the treasurer's agenda, so I will take a motion.
So moved.
And do we have a second? All right, Steve with the second. All right, Jeremy, please call roll.
Mrs. McMackin.
Aye.
Mr. Frazier.
Aye.
Mrs. Mars.
Aye.
Mr. Mitchell.
Aye.
Mr. Ford.
Aye. All right, moving right along, we have the superintendent's report.
Thank you. We always do a semi-annual bowling report, just to kind of update the public on where we are with reports and those kinds of things. We always do that in December and then June, I believe. So, it's December, so Mr. Lyons has an update for us.
Good evening, everybody. The December report is as follows. We had 114 total reports from all five buildings. There was two at Spring Creek, and these are just the reports, not the actuals. One at Washington Primary, Pickle Central had 47, Pickle Junior High had 56, and the high school had eight. There were three actuals at Pickle Central and two at the junior high and none at the other buildings. If you remember from the last couple of times that we've done this, our highest volume is always going to be from the Pickle Central building, four, five, six grades, and then, of course, the junior high. The one thing that appears to be a little bit of an anomaly this year is that PCIS's reporting numbers are down a little bit from, from last year. I didn't go back two years, but we will eventually. I'm going to talk to Heath to see if he thinks that there's any, anything that there. I know reporting overall discipline is down. We've already had that discussion at that building, so I'm thinking it's probably just part of that trend, that it's down, generally speaking. But...
Isn't that good that it's down?
I, I think so.
Yeah.
I, I always think when we have less numbers with bullying reporting, that it's a good thing, right? But one of the things they do a really good job at that building of is making sure they're communicating with the kids. They do practice runs. They teach them constantly about using the system to report, but there's been a noticeable drop this year in those reports. So, yeah, it's good news. And then, after Christmas, when they come back, Dwayne always asks the principals, make sure you remind all the kids what you do in this process, what bullying is, and how to get in the system and write that up and those kinds of things. So, we'll see a little bit of an uptick probably following the holidays as the kids get back. And it'll be interesting to see how the numbers play out in June with that total, the volume of, of reports versus actuals. The actuals were down a little bit, by three. The rest of the buildings looked pretty typical, not a lot of differences in numbers of reported. So, yeah, overall, I think it is good news, but we'll watch it pretty closely to make sure. Any questions?
That's, I mean, that's good. That's, so, any, any strange ones or any, like, anonymous ones that...
Well, we get anonymous all the time. They try to vet those out still and make sure that they, if they have any data they can use, they try to figure out what it is. But Tip, like, today I got four and...
Anonymous?
No.
Oh.
But, just to give you the, he asked about strange ones, too. Anonymous are very difficult for us to get any kind of, when we say anonymous, there's no reporter, but also, they don't name anybody. It's hard, if you got somebody named, usually you can at least talk to those kids and try to figure out. But, like, today, the one said, so-and-so hit me in my arm. And that was from a junior high kid. Now, the response was great in there, yes, there's these, but it's two kids that have been ongoing, touching each other, and they can't, you know, they're causing problems for each other, but it's not a bullying scenario. So, when I went through each one of them, nothing popped out, other than we have one, one or two kids that are kind of on the list, if you will, that are showing up a little bit more than others, so. But it's also good. They know who they are.
They know who they are.
They know who they are. Because they follow those kids once they identify them as a person that's causing that kind of problem. That's not something that just goes away. If you remember back, they have a good system at PCIS where they're monitoring that. It doesn't just stop once the discipline's an issue, but they follow up with those kids and they follow up with victims to make sure that they're not having future incidents. So, in fact, they do a really good job with those kinds of things. So, yeah, I'm encouraged at this point, but, you know, you always kind of make sure that, that your numbers are, are accurate and that you're getting the data back that you want. So, it's good.
How is the, how, does this, do other schools do bullying reports?
It's illegal. You have to report it.
You have to do, okay.
You have to report this to your board twice a year, December, June, so, and it's supposed to be, excuse me, it's supposed to be public. So, everybody has to. Not everybody uses the same reporting system that we do, but everybody now is required to have an electronic reporting system in place.
Yeah.
Now, like, when you hit that, where you say you got one today where it's two people, and you know it's just two people picking on each other.
Yep.
Do you let the principal know that you got that and that these two people...
They know.
Are picking on each other?
Yep. I don't, so, in this particular, one of the principals of the junior high wrote that very thing down. He, I have them, when they go through, they investigate it, they'll tell me right in the investigation if it was, what, a case of bullying or not, based on their investigation. In this particular case, the principal wrote down exactly what it was. These two kids were, have been, there's a little bit of a history there, hassling each other, touching each, smacking, just junior high kid kind of stuff. But they'll report that in the system, so I can see that, Dwayne can see that, what that outcome is.
What, once they report it, it comes to me, to Tony and the principal. If it's a severe or something we're really worried about, we'll call the principal right away and say, hey, check this out. But they'll get to it, and then, when they respond to it, we then get a follow-up with what the response was. So, we can tell if it was a real case, not a real case. If a name stands out, then we might have a conversation, but usually the principal addresses it, and the system that goes back and forth reporting to us keeps us updated on it.
That is a nice system.
It is. And, and if there's, we've talked about this before, sometimes a kid might get on and not report bullying, but just report a situation. Like, we've had kids in an abusive situation, late at night, saying, I need help. And when those kinds of things go through, or if a kid makes a threat, they have a 24/7 calling system. They'll call my number, they'll call me right away and say, we're calling from Public School Works. You need to check out this report. And we can go look at it, and we can get engaged in it right away. We've done stuff at three in the morning before with police and other people to get students help that get on there and request, you know, that, that kind of assistance.
Does that happen a lot?
No, not, not really, but when it does, it's, it's really good to have. There are key words, too. So, you know, we've talked about this before. When we were kids and you said, I'm going to kill you, and that meant I'm going to get you, or I'm going to, you know, but when a kid says something like that, it, that word kills is going to trigger, and it's going to make them call me and say, hey, this word popped up. You need to investigate it and find out what's going on. If the kid says something like, I know two kids are going to go get in a fight at a park after school, they'll call us right away and say, there's going to be an incident, you better check it out. So, we can be proactive versus waiting for it to happen and see, you know, what we can do about it.
I didn't know it was available for them to, like, do that at home.
Yeah.
Anywhere they have electronic. And most of them use their phones.
It is really nice. And then, at the high school, the student, I don't know if you want to talk about it or not, Spencer, but they came up with a QR code where a kid can do it quickly. Rather than getting on a computer, logging on and doing it, they can just go up and hit the QR code and say, Johnny's doing whatever, and submit a bullying report that way. So, they tried to make it more discreet and easier for a high school kid to do it, so that they can get, get that communication through to us.
Can you track how many people use the QR code?
We don't have the ability to track from the QR code, only reporting.
Only reporting.
Yep. It doesn't tell us if it came from a QR. Now, I will tell you, if it comes from the high school, it's probably pretty likely they didn't spend time getting in a computer and going through the three or four steps it takes to log in.
Right.
They're going to hit that QR code. Those guys are. I mean, it came from the kids last year, if you guys remember me reporting on that. It came from that group. So, they just don't want to spend the time going through that, and then they feel like there's a quicker response because they have one step versus, you know, two or three, grab the laptop or open it up and those kinds of things. So, it'd be nice if we could see that, and I'll check again with Eric, but I don't know that we can tell.
That's a good question, actually.
There are multiple, multiple QR codes, I'm assuming, around the building.
Yeah, you got it posted up on posters, right? Is that how they did it?
They laminated posters. They put them on every stairwell and then at the front of the building, I believe, is where they put them all.
I'm sure, I don't want, kids don't want to be picked on if they've seen, scanned in the...
That's part of it, too.
If something happens, they didn't want to get on the computer right away.
There should be one in, like, the stall or something, you know, something that may be in the bathroom or something like that.
We can talk about locations, too. I mean, it's, it's a good point, honestly.
I think that'd be a great thing for the student advisory to find out, are they located in a good spot? Do we need more of them anywhere?
I mean, I see, I don't know if there's any in the restrooms, but I usually see them walking through every hallway, so, I mean...
Have you ever seen kids using them? Like, scan?
I have not personally seen them anywhere.
And I can't, I, I would have to look back at the totality of reports, because what I've given you is things that are bullying, so somebody selected that.
Yeah.
But there are other reports that all can be, that come through there.
Yeah.
So, you know, you can, you can see we've only got eight total bullying reports for that particular building. The volume of reports that come out of there aren't very high. By the time the kids get to the high school, most of them have kind of figured each other out and those kinds, so you don't get those, or smack at each other, or touching like a junior high.
He's touching me, you know?
Yeah. So, you don't get a lot of those kinds of things that we can resolve unless they rise to that level. So, I mean, it's, but it's worth, you know, continuing to talk to them. And I don't know what, when your last meeting was. I have, they don't put me on the agenda regularly. They don't want to see me over there, so. But I'll check back in, especially on the QR. Good question.
Well, it's...
Good question.
If someone, if someone gets on there and just starts berating somebody, like, can you ping it to a person if you need to? Like, if there's any threats made against, you could ping it back to their phone or to their...
No.
No?
Anonymous is truly anonymous.
If it's our computer.
You could ping it to the time.
On our system. It's, we've, we've had that happen with some other things, but when it comes to reporting systems...
On the phone, it'd be hard to do that.
We're not going to be able to find that.
Yeah. But on the computer, you could say, okay, there was this person at this time.
If it's our, if it's our school issued, we could find out if it came from that particular device, but even then, it's difficult. So, we don't get a, a lot of that either.
Well, that's good.
So, which is nice. I think our kids use it, but they've been trained so much to this point about how to get on there and use the system. So, I think that's probably a, a part of what we're seeing, too, is the junior high numbers have come up a little bit, but those kids, the last several years of being trained, 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 now they're, they're using.
When did we start this, again?
We've had public schools for quite some time, but we've really been focused, I'd say, in the last five or six years of being intentional. You, I talked about those, those false reports that come through because the teachers are training the kids to use it and practicing, being intentional in the classrooms to make sure they know how to use the system, I think, last, I would say, five or six years.
We want them to. We don't shy away from those. I would rather a kid report it and us address it than if not.
Yeah. And it starts at PCIS, right?
No.
No, it's K-through. K-through. And you just go to our website, it's right there, so a parent can do it, too. And every once in a while, a parent will get on and say, my child came home today and said this happened on the bus or whatever, and we can investigate it right away. It's a really good way for them to report something. Like, if it's eight or nine o'clock at night and we're not in the building and a, and a kid happens to say something, then the parent can get on right away and report it, and then the next morning, we can address it. So, that's a really good way to do it. And like you said, we, we train them at the beginning of the year. We do it after Christmas break and after spring break. Those are good times of the year to kind of refresh kids and get them, you know, back on track with, here's how you use it.
Okay.
And the kids can tell the parents how to do it.
Yep, yeah.
Yeah. And honestly, for, for adults, it's so user-friendly.
Hey, hey, hey. I've been told that before.
You know, sometimes, if, if, if a parent calls with a concern, we'll ask them to go on and do it because we want that tracking in place. That way, once we've gone through the process and we've said to maybe the kid that had the infraction, stop it, leave the kid alone, and it continues, we then have that trail that we can follow to get more progressive with discipline. So, sometimes they might just call and forget that we have the system or not have ever used it, and we'll say, well, listen, and then we'll say, could you go ahead and do a report as well? That way, we've got it on record and we can get more, more progressive. So, it, it's good that way, too.
Yeah, we always direct them to the system if they call it in, so we have documentation, paper trail for those things. Any other questions on that? Thank you.
Thank you. I feel like that's the most we've ever talked about, the bullying report.
Yeah.
Good questions.
Next is the KRA data, the kindergarten readiness assessment, and you've got to bring that up, Eric. So, I mentioned at the beginning of the year, when we went over report card data, two of our greatest challenges seems to be our kindergarten readiness assessment and our attendance. We talked about attendance last time, and the day after the board meeting, the KRA data finally came out. I was hoping it would come out in November so we could talk about it, but it just took a while for the state to get all that put together. So, just a quick update, these are the four components that it tests the students on. There are 50 questions on the test. It is a secured test, so I can't give you examples. They don't, they don't release anything for us to see, so I really can't tell you or talk about it because it's not available in that kind of a way. But when they report it, then, they go into three categories. The emerging readiness, which is the student has minimal knowledge, minimal kind of foundational skills that shows that they're ready for kindergarten. The approaching, they have some, and then the demonstrating, they're ready. They're, they're ready to be a learner. They've got a really good foundation. They're not behind in any way, and they're ready to hit the ground running. See if I can get this to work. Here's our results. So, we want the green to be our biggest number, and it unfortunately is our lowest number. So, 50 of our kindergartners this year demonstrated readiness for kindergarten. And this is, one of the concerns is our largest number is the red, which is the emerging, which means 92 or 40%, 40.5% of our kids were not ready for kindergarten when they arrived, according to the state assessment. So, you can see what our data looks like. It's opposite of what we want to happen. So, again, this all happens the first couple of weeks of kindergarten, so it has, it has to do with what a kid comes to school with. So, the emerging, which means they have very little foundation, that number continues to get higher. And at the end, the overall readiness for demonstrating, which means they are ready, continues to have this downward trend. It's very problematic. I, I think the last time I saw state averages, it was like the 45% or something like that of kids ready, and we're, you know, dropping down on like the 20, 22%. So, we're significantly lower than a state average for our community. Add that to what we talked about with attendance. So, when a kid comes to us and they're behind in kindergarten, it takes a while to get them caught up. Many of those kids don't have the foundation skills. They might not have seen letters or print. I feel like sometimes our kids have been put on phones a lot. They just haven't had experience with books. It might be a transitional family where there's not been a lot of stability for the kids. So, add that to the fact that if they've got a high incident of attendance problems, which we looked at last month, it's really putting kids behind. It's making it double hard for us to get that kid caught and come back on track, which is a real struggle. It's a real struggle.
I remember this graphic from last, is this from kindergarten or is this from...
This is K-12.
Okay, okay, so we're starting in kindergarten.
So, we, we have kids that, that miss two days a month. If you miss two days a month, by the time you graduate, you've missed the whole year of school.
That's crazy.
If you miss four days a month, which we have kids in that category, they've missed two years of school by graduation.
And both of those are, is that, that's considered chronic, is it chronic absentee or...?
Chronic, yes, yeah. So, you know, it, it, it's just something that we really have to keep paying attention to. We're trying to address it. We're doing lots of things with attendance. What we're trying to do right now with the KRA stuff is, we've talked a little bit about this at the beginning of the year, but I'll give you an update, is our students, our success program for the 1,000 books before kindergarten. We're trying to get in contact with families that have kids that are birthed through, through five. We don't have their addresses. We don't have any contact information because they haven't registered with us yet, so we're trying to get word out through various ways of, here's just one thing that you can do. So, we started at the beginning of the year, and here are our first groups of kids that have reached certain milestones and...
And they're not in kindergarten yet?
Not kindergarten. These are kids that are, like I said, birthed to fifth grade. I'm sorry, five years of age. They're not registered with us in any way. We have just had a partnership with the Pickle Public Library. We're trying to get word out as much as we can. And one of the things we have are these little cards, and it tells about the program, and on the back is a QR code. It's very easy to register. They just click their phone on that. They fill it out, and once they read a book, they track it. It goes into a tracking system. The Pickle Public Library can see the kid is reading books, and we can see that, and we can start offering prizes and rewards. We have a couple of really nice grants coming forward that will give the kids a shirt that says, I'm success-bound, and it'll say, I've, I've read 1,000 books getting ready for kindergarten on it. It'll have the QR code, and we are hoping that kid will walk around and be a billboard for us. But we're just trying to get families engaged again, once again, in books, because it really is easy to, to be on technology now and to be stuck on a phone, playing games. It's just wiring kids differently, and we just really got to get kids into more of a text kind of a thing. So, reading to your kids is so valuable. It increases their vocabulary, their knowledge, their background knowledge. There's so much value to it. I could go on and on about it. And, and again, all that information is here for a parent to read when they click on here, and they can see that real value in, in engaging their kid in literacy. So, those are some of our first kids that we're super excited about. Just a few more benchmarks. We are at 61 students right now, which doesn't seem like a lot, but that's 61 kids we made a contact with that really are not on our rosters, so we're, we're excited to have that. And you can kind of see where our kids are in terms of the milestones they've reached. Every time they reach a hundred milestone, they can come in here, they can get a free book. We have other various prizes that we provide them with through grants that we've achieved. Emily loves that moment, and you know she's throwing glitter on them and everything else because that's, that's Emily, and she makes a really big deal out of it, and the parents really enjoy bringing their kid in here as well as the library to get that recognition. Here's all the ways we've tried to share information. We've tried to get it out in every format we can that would reach that population. Again, we don't have contact with these families yet, so trying to get them registered through different things, like our local pediatric offices and parents as teachers. When we did kindergarten registration, we talked to parents about if they had younger children, because many of those children have siblings. We tried to get them registered then. You've done a really nice article for us, and she continues to ask us questions and updates because she wants to get that message out. She's really taken this on to, to help us get it out, too, so I really appreciate that. Of course, social media, every time a kid reaches a milestone, we get that out there, and it gets really good feedback. A lot of, a lot of people like to see that, so. And there's the QR code for people that are home that are watching this. They can just click on that and get registered very easily. So, not good information with our KRA. We're going to continue to work on that data. Again, it has nothing to do with anything we've done. It's a matter of awareness, getting some information out to our parents and helping them see what they need to do.
I was at Spring Creek today, and I was counting the check marks because it meant, above every word, because when the, it meant that the, when the student read that story to the teacher, they said the word.
Yeah.
And I had to check mark and count how many.
Yeah.
And there were, there were a lot that had a lot of them.
That's great.
But there was this one, and I had to ask. I said, what is this? And she said, well, it's chronic absenteeism. And she made up, he made up the cutest story about this story that wasn't anything to do with what was written there. But he tried. She said he really tried.
Yeah.
And I thought, oh, my. But, yeah, but it, I was, they, they did very, very good. And I've noticed, because I've been reading with them, they get so excited that they, though, they know what they want to say, or they know what's going to happen, so they'll invent a word or forget something. I said, nah, nah, what's this word?
Yeah.
And you have to go back. But they, I, I, I can see a difference from the beginning of the year to now.
Yeah.
And how much they've improved.
I think, I taught kindergarten for two years, and I think it was my favorite age to teach because they come in everywhere. I mean, there, there are kids that really come in with a great foundation, and there are kids that come in with very little. And, and to get to the end of the year and to see that growth is so, so fun to watch.
First grade teacher said they had to come in and they got, come from 10 words or something to 51 words by the time they're supposed to get out of there.
Yeah.
And she said, that, that is a lot.
Yeah. And it's a big deal.
And they're not fast readers.
Yeah.
So, I mean, they have to be kind of the fast reader to get 51 words off.
It's a big deal to read. It's, when you start reading and you make sense of a story, it's a big deal for kids.
It is.
It's a real milestone in life.
But it was fun. It's been fun and it's been rewarding. But I thought it was really cute. That person didn't know anything, but it made a wonderful story up.
Yeah. So, any questions on kindergarten readiness or the program that we're doing? We'll continue to try to update this, and every, every time we do something like a post, like a social media post or something, we always go in and see if any more people, and we always get a couple of people that register, so. And keeping it motivated, you know, sometimes they'll register and throw a couple of books in, and then it stays stagnant for a while, so we try to reach out and ask them, is there anything we can do, and how can we, you know, boost this up? Do you want to come in and get a book for your kid? That kind of a thing to kind of motivate it, so. So, there's that. Just wanted to point out our new artwork. I don't know if you saw that. So, I want to thank Tom and Cheryl Beaker, who went to the Indian 300, and they continued to bid on it because they felt like the school district had to have it. So, they bid and bid and bid, and I think Tom got nervous, but Cheryl kept bidding, so she won it, and they came in and said, we want you to put this somewhere really great. So, you know, we kind of had this artwork in here. We never really had anything in here that looked Pickle Indian, so we put that there. And it was made by Sean Applegate. He's, he's one of our parents of a couple of high school students.
That's awesome.
Aiden and Nadia, I believe. So, he made that, and it's absolutely beautiful.
It was going. There was a lot of people that were bidding at that night.
Cheryl and Tom said, by golly, you guys were going to get this. So, they really made sure. They, they came in so happy to share it, and like I said, really, just Sean did a beautiful, beautiful job on it.
That was a great, that was a great event.
Yeah.
Chip told me that he, he needs me to bid up some items. I said, I'm not the type of guy that, you don't, I'm not a bidder-upper. I was like, you can't count on me.
Yeah. So, I, just to really appreciate that. And just a note to appreciate our, our music programs because they've done such a great job on our programs already this year. They really bring the community together. At the Green, the show choir was down there, and the freezing cold, but it was so fun to see them. The big concert for the high school's coming up this weekend. I think you have a solo, don't you?
Ah, yes, I do.
All right. You got to come see Spencer sing.
Uh-oh.
So, no pressure. Go ahead. Give us a sample. It's going to be a great, great, great program. You know they decorate so beautifully and everything was good, but I don't, I don't know that you guys realize the joy you bring to the community in, in doing that. And it's just so fun. The band program was amazing. Again, the jazz band just lays it every time they get up there.
I can't believe the saxophone lady.
Yeah.
Oh, she's amazing.
Becca Henry.
She's amazing.
Absolutely wonderful. And all the kids, again, just so, so much talent. So we really tried to promote that, get the community out. But I just want to thank the kids and the directors for all their work because I know how hard, how hard you guys really work and the time that you put into it, so. And that's it for me.
All right. That's the superintendent's report. Now moving on to the superintendent's agenda.
Okay. Recommend the board approval, the attached list of donations and grants. So we have a few here. So Shell Station every year gives us a, a moment of time where anytime they make a sale, we get a percentage of that. It's like a week long or two weeks. So this year, we got $422.09 from them. So that's just always great that they do that for us. The Miami Valley Bass Masters, a group of guys that love to go fishing. They get together every year and put some money together. This year, we used that money to support a family that was in need. The Minutemen gave us money for some Thanksgiving meals. Again, we use that to provide to families that needed food at Thanksgiving time. Melissa Millhouse for the Garden Club and Kim, I'm sorry, Chris and Jim Mitchum for the Glenn Howland Field Trip. They donate money every year to sponsor kids through that field trip that we'll approve here in a minute. And then several grants from the Pickle Education Foundation, the Pickle Community Foundation, and the Lungard Foundation who gave $12,500 for our STEM program that we added to the intermediate school this year. So now that we have a K-12 program, which we've been working on for probably three or four years, that'll be our next focus at the next board meeting. Scott's going to come in and do a presentation on that program, the sequence, give you some ideas. And I asked him to bring something for you to play with or do something with, so we'll, we'll, we'll do that. And he's excited. Scott, Scott's the STEM guy. So we're excited about that. Recommend board approval, the attached list of technology equipment for disposal and removal. So anytime the technology, the equipment wears out or ages out, they strip everything they can from it. If you want to ever see their storage room, it just has boxes of bits and pieces. You can go look at it. But this is what's left over that, that they can't do anything with. Recommend board approval, the Pickle Central Intermediate Fifth Grade Program for the overnight Glenn Howland trip, which we just talked about. They do that every year. They usually go in the spring. Great program. That's where I first met Spencer cheating. He cheated me out and played cards and beat my pants off the whole night. So we have a funny story with that, so. That's it.
All right. So now we need a, to approve the superintendent's agenda. Do I have a motion? All right, do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Kelly and Steve. All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right. Superintendent Agenda approved. Now moving on to the personnel agenda with Mr. Lyons.
Good evening. Thank you. Very small agenda, which is wonderful news. The only thing that I wanted to point out there was Items Three and Four are new bus drivers. That's the third one we've added in the last two months. These two are both getting trained. You might recognize Jordan's name. He was a student here and worked with Larry Young Live for many years and he's on board right now. They're both working, both being trained and they're both doing additional duties right now at the building. So excited to get those on board. But outside of that, small agenda. If you have any questions, I'll take them.
Jordan's a great guy.
Great guy.
Yeah, Jordan. Jordan is good to get.
Everything that he does, yeah.
All right. Any questions for Tony?
Thank you.
All right. Seeing none, I will take a motion to approve the personnel agenda. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Jeremy, will you please call roll?
Mrs. Mars.
Aye.
Mr. Frazier.
Aye.
Mr. Mitchell.
Aye.
Mrs. McMackin.
Aye.
Mr. Ford.
Aye. All right. Personnel agenda approved. No old business tonight. Now we're moving on to new business.
We have the tentative organizational meeting that we do every year set for January 9th at 4:30. Is everybody okay with that? Do you want to approve that separately?
Yep.
All right. Do we need to do roll for that or do we just need to, do we need to do roll for all of this? Okay. I'll take a motion to set the Board of Educa, Board of Education Organizational Meeting on January 9th, 2025. All right, JoJo's, we have a second. All right. Jeremy, please call roll.
Mr. Frazier.
Aye.
Mrs. Mars.
Aye.
Mrs. McMackin.
Aye.
Mr. Mitchell.
Aye.
Mr. Ford.
Aye.
Okay. The next is, these are just proposed dates that match up to kind of what we've done this year. They're not set in stone. You can take these home and look at your calendars and then at the organizational meeting, we'll finalize them. So if you feel like there's any conflicts or you want to move anything, just a couple of notes. The March, we moved that one up because one of those weeks at the end was spring break. And then the week before that is the musical and it's going to be a huge musical this year with Grease going on. So that's why March ended up moving up that week to avoid that. In April, we moved it up to avoid the Pickle Junior High Musical because they're always a big production too. The 31st, between Jeremy and I and our vacations, we're, we won't even see each other that month because we're all gone. So he was going to be out at the end of the month and he said that it's such, July is such an, an, an easy kind of board meeting because not a lot's going on really at that point. So Linda can fill in for him pretty easily at that point. So that's why we chose that date. So otherwise, the dates kind of match up again to what we've done this year. So take a look at, at the 9th then. You can bring any awareness of any conflicts that you have and then we'll, you know, fix that. And then down below are the current board appointments. We'll go over that again. You can show any interest that you have and if you have any additional kinds of committees or anything that you want to add, we can put that on at that meeting too. But that's just to give you an idea of what's currently in place. Okay? So anybody have any questions about this or anything? Like I said, we'll go over it all on the 9th, but it's just kind of what the current status is, just to kind of refresh your minds. Okay. Appoint the president pro tem for the January organizational meeting.
This cannot be me. It needs to be somebody else. Correct.
Oh, it could be Steve? So we have to nominate somebody? Okay. I'm going to nominate our vice president.
All right, now a second.
Second.
You have three seconds of fame there when you do it. It's really, it's not hard. Unless you want Spencer to do it.
They'll say yes. Don't give them.
Don't give them the option. Are you good? Yes, I'm. All right. Now do we need to do roll for that one as well or do we just everyone? Okay. All those in favor of Steve Frazier being the president pro tem on the, in the January organizational meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right.
Thank you, Steve. Next, recommend board approval, the appointment of the Upper Valley Career Center Development Governing Board for Kelly McMackin to fulfill the interim term of one year expiring December 31st of '25 and a full term January 26th through December 28th. So just a reminder on that, each district that has connection to the Career Center, excuse me, has a person appointed to it. Our last two were on the board, but then retired off the board, but continue to fulfill that. Clint is going to retire from this board and no longer be on it. So Kelly had volunteered to fulfill this term, but then up to his resignation and then go on to the next term. Because we do need to have somebody from here that can kind of be connected and give those updates and so on since so many of our students have served there. So thank you for volunteering on that and just take a vote on that.
All right. I will take a motion to approve Kelly. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right, Kelly, you are approved. Congratulations.
I believe you'll really like that board. I really think you will. I'll get your contact information to Jason and then he'll be in contact with you to kind of get you started. Okay?
Okay.
If I can do anything to support you, let you know. Recommend board approval, the appointment of Mrs. Teresa Anderson to a seven-year term to the Pickle Public Library Board of Trustees beginning January 1st of '25 and then in December 31st of 2031.
Is she replacing someone?
Nope. She's already there. She's, she's just going to kind of keep, keep going with it and then we oversee that. So we would approve that appointment for the board and they're fully aware of it, so. They're long terms. Seven years is a long term.
That is a long term.
Yeah.
Is it, can you only serve one term or do you do multiple terms?
Nope. There's, there's been people on there for several years, actually. Yeah.
Wow.
So you'll have to do a roll call on that.
All right. First of all, I need a motion to approve Teresa Anderson to a seven-year term on the Pickle. Oops, go ahead. Do you have a question?
No.
Oh, you, okay. We have a motion from JoJo. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Jeremy, will you please call roll?
Mr. Ford.
Aye.
Mrs. Mars.
Aye.
Mr. Mitchell.
Aye.
Mrs. McMackin.
Aye.
Mr. Frazier.
Aye.
All right. Teresa Anderson has been approved from the Pickle Public Library Board of Trustees.
Thank her for us.
Yes.
It's a long term and then she's done it once already. All right. This is the big expenditure of the evening. Are we ready?
Mm-hmm.
All right. We had the bid opening today for the tennis courts and site improvements. The total came in and the base bid was $3,382,000.
To build the courts?
Well, it's not just that. So you got to remember, we, we're setting up the property for the future. So this first phase was going to be a lot because we are putting in all the infrastructure.
The water and all that stuff.
Correct. So you're talking about electric sewer, wa, electric sewer water, the gas lines that had to be moved. You're cutting in a new storm sewer line from the brown barn all the way out to the retention pond, doubling the size of the retention pond, taking down half of that woods, creating the new path back through there for, for across country people, as Stephen knows. That's going to be fun. I just, it'd be a nice addition to the run.
That'd be, that'd be awesome.
They're going to run through that?
The the storm sewer part was close to $800,000. The, the, the pond was close to $750,000.
That's not bad, though, you think about all the work that's going in there.
It's massive. And you're talking about a pipe that we can walk through that's going to be going in there. And then, you know, we're going to have to replace the concrete in front of the stadium.
That big a pipe?
Yeah. That's how much water has to be taken out of this. It's Spring Creek for a reason.
It's a spring. It's Spring Creek. There's, there's a lot of water out there. If you remember, I don't know who was on way back when we first started looking at space out there, the first thing they said to us was, "Make sure you take care of the water" and get it properly drained and so on. Before we do anything, we really have to make sure we've got that taken care of.
We, we tried to just fix the tennis courts and it didn't work. The water literally just comes up through the courts. So we have to, it has to get totally taken out. And so putting this in will help as we have money to be able to continue to add pieces, keep doing that. So this is getting that, that, that foundation put in there. So tonight, we're talking about that $3,382,000. And then we reviewed the alternates. And so one of the alternates is for the canopy structures so that we have the stadium seating, not stadium seating, but bleacher seating and also the, the canopies over top of them to help with sun and rain and those kind of things. As well as, there'll be a building on, on the site with restrooms. It'll be insulated and heated. So it's going to, it's also able to protect for storm shelter as well if there's something going on that we need to get the kids in immediately. So we have that.
Is that with the tennis courts or other things that we get?
Well, right now it's the tennis courts because that's what will be in that area. Eventually, if the field house gets put in beside that, then it'll be, we'll have multiple places. But for right now, soccer doesn't have a place to go if they're practicing except for under the junior high. So this will be another area that they could get to in, in a case of a storm. But with our new monitoring system, I don't know that we're really going to have that problem because it, it does a good job of telling us when it's time to go. So that's been working out great.
Yeah. He's referencing, we have a, a new app called the Perry Weather System. A lot of sports programs use that. We have an actual little weather station set up at the Alexander Stadium that we use for football in particular because when lightning strikes happen within so many miles, there are rules that require us to shut down the game and pause it for a while and so on. So having that really gives us really good data, but their, their system is amazing. I mean, it's great at predicting fog and s, snow and whatever, whatever it might be, the feels like temperatures and all that. And, and we have 24 access, 24/7 access to them. I can text them or call them and say, "I need the most current weather update" and they'll give it to us. I actually used it for Top 100 this last year because there was a prediction that there could be rain and so on. And we were trying to decide if we wanted to move it and I called them and he said, "Within this percentage of accuracy, I guarantee it won't rain during your time." And we went with it and it was fine. So it's a really good system.
Do we use it for graduation?
Well, yes. But we also have called meteorologists at different stations and got information and it didn't work out for us either, so, yeah. It just won't rain on that day.
No.
This year, we picked the day where it will not rain on graduation.
That's been recorded.
So what I'm asking to approve is the base bid for the $3,382,000. There's $122,000 for the, the canopy structure as well as $95,000 for the other two canopy structures. Because there's going to be three different viewing areas to the tennis courts. One set of, there's nine totals, nine total tennis courts. One section will also have pickleball. So you can do both. And then there'll be six courts that are just tennis at this point in time. Pickleball could become the next NBL sport. For all we know, it's growing fast.
Yeah.
So we may have to come back and put more pickleball stuff in. It will be capable of doing that. We're just setting up one set for now.
How many tennis courts do we have now?
Six.
Six.
This will also be able to host all the way up to district, all the way up to district tournaments.
Okay.
And it's $323,500 to add the lights. And we're working on getting some funding to do that. But we're going to go ahead and proceed forward as if we're putting the lights in at this point because we want to be able to take this project and mark it off the list as we've got it done and got it done completely. Because we can say, "Well, we'll kick the can down the road and then do you ever get back finishing the project?" So I'd rather just get it finished.
This is including the lighting?
The lighting is through, additional $323,500. The insulation is bid alternate five for $950,000. And then vinyl fence instead of aluminum fence is an additional $14,000. And then it's $5,800 to change the spacing between the poles from 10 feet to eight feet, making the poles closer to each other. But that helps because when you put up a wind fence, that's a lot of pressure to be putting against those fences. So they recommend that we use eight feet instead of 10. So it wasn't a big price in totality of the whole project to make sure that we don't have those poles getting real loose and then start flapping and everything. So the entire cost to do what we're talking about is $3,943,250. And the good news is that I've saved more than that for this specific project. And so we are still within our budget to be able to make this happen.
And that's the bid?
That is the bid that we received.
Just one bid?
Who bid on it?
Uh, Brumbau. We did not receive any more bids today. There were some other people looking at it. There were some concerns about the electric part of it and I think that it just scared people off. There's been a change with the city of Pickle and who is in charge of electric and there's been some issues with how this is going to work with the electric. So I think that's the biggest chunk that we can find so far of what the problem is.
And this will be completed by when?
Uh, this will be done sometime in March from what I'm being told. Now again, this is all subject to that it not being like 10 degrees in March, right?
Right.
I mean, we have to be able to get the asphalt from somewhere. So it's really dependent, everything will be done and then dependent on when the weather hits so that we can put, put the asphalt in.
Okay.
I like it's Brumbau because we've had a lot of success with this.
We have.
A lot. And they're more receptive of what we have to suggest too. If we have a change, they're more receptive of our changes. If you get somebody new, they may just say no.
Well, they understand my, I mean, my initial concern is the price is a little bit higher than, you know, what any of us want to spend, but on the, on one hand, but this is a massive project once again and we're taking massive undertaking. And Jamie and Jason's response, Jamie's the project guy and, and Jason's the owner. And their, their response was, "We will work with you to value engineer some things when we find some ways that we can start making some changes that may help save you some money." Because this electric thing is a big question mark and I think we may not end up, like right now, I think we're on the most expensive way that we can be. And I think as we figure out this electric, it, it could be coming back and, and saving us some money. The electric is just a big question mark.
What would that do to traffic? What would they start?
There will be no traffic issues because everything is south of the bus parking lot. And then it will be south of the student parking lot in the stadium area. So it's, we're really going to be taking that pipeline where the current retention pond is behind the bus, that pipeline will go through there. And then it'll go across probably where the turnaround is. So again, that, we're not going to need that initially. probably where the turnaround is. So again, that, we're not going to need that initially. Hopefully by track season, it'll be finished, but that's the only casualty we have is we can't have the, the drop off. We haven't had that forever. I mean, that's a pretty recent thing. And then it will cut across then through the concrete in front of the stadium. So they know that the stadium concrete needs to be done before track season starts.
Right.
So they've been made fully aware of that, so.
All right.
And they know it has to be cleared for graduation.
So when, like, when are they planning to really start this?
Uh, probably, right, it could be as early as in December or it'll be in January. It, it is a winter project. We are pushing hard, so it'll be fast.
All right. Any other questions?
The weather has to cooperate with us.
Yeah, well, I mean, it's obviously going to be way weather-dependent.
All right. I will take a motion to approve the bid for the Pickle High School Tennis Courts Project.
So move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Jeremy, please call roll.
Mrs. McMackin.
Aye.
Mrs. Mars.
Aye.
Mr. Frazier.
Aye.
Mr. Mitchell.
Aye.
Mr. Ford.
Aye.
All right. That has been approved. Thank you very much, Jeremy.
You're welcome.
Um, moving on to our second and final reading of the Neola Board Policy Update.
Anybody have any questions on any of those?
Nope.
They're pretty basic.
Yeah, pretty basic changes.
Okay.
All right. Do we have a motion to approve the second reading or a motion to approve the Neola Board Policy Update? Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. All the, well, Jeremy, call roll.
Mr. Frazier.
Aye.
Mr. Mitchell.
Aye.
Mrs. Mars.
Aye.
Mrs. McMackin.
Aye.
Mr. Ford.
Aye.
All right. That is passed. All right, moving on to hearing of the public non-agenda items. We have nothing. Is there anything else that we have?
Spencer has a presentation.
You have a presentation?
No.
Yeah, you're going to sing it. It's your solo.
Oh, Lord. Got a little Sunday for that.
Okay.
Actually, we have a presentation for you. Do you have something?
No.
Nope. I shared with all of you, but we just want to publicly recognize you and congratulate you for making the engineering department at the University of Dayton.
Thank you very much.
It's quite an accomplishment and you worked really hard to get to that. And we know a lot of students are starting to get their, their college announcements right now, but you got yours because you worked really hard on it very early and we're just super proud of you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Good job, buddy.